Now it says it's recording, so you can either pause it, which I usually do.
We have a nice shot of your profile. Right here's the little pause.
Okay, we want to welcome everyone to South Weaver City Council. It's 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August the 27th, 2024.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under our government, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with. Our monitors and our microphone are not working, so we ask everyone, this one's not working. We want to speak loud. Recording here, and we are live streaming the promo there. Nothing inside there works off everyone, please. Speak up, can I be sure? Begin with our public comments, if you have a comment you'd like to make, but ask me to step up to the microphone. State your name and the city in which you live.
Yes, I'll start. Holstern, South Weaver City. My public comment, page one of my public comment has to do with the certified property tax rate. The purpose, an excerpt from the package says, and I have a screenshot image of that. And it says that Vegas County was it double zero one two eight seven, South Weaver's proposing double zero fourteen forty-one. The extraction information shows a certified tax rate for South Weaver City. And it shows as input. But if you go to item eight, budget page eighty-five of two thirty-five under budget highlights, it states for the twenty-four twenty-five, for the FY twenty-four twenty-five, the city is proposing we hold the rate for property taxes. That's a discrepancy there. You said in one part of the presentation, it says the leasing rate, and later on, the budget highlight says that we're not. The other item has also, again, item seven, that has to do with packet, excerpt. The analysis said the sales tax rate is part of the budgeting process. A fee of the double zero fourteen forty-one will help compensate for inflation and aid the city in keeping all services up. The topic being addressed in this section of the packet is a certified tax rate, not the sales tax rate that is set by the state. Thank you. Oh, South Weaver. Public public joy, split here and said, would you grab the banner on the road going south to school? And I pretty appreciate it because we're the next day, those are grabbing back. Yeah, I just want to tell you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, and next on our agenda, we'd like to make a recognize some special people here in South Weaver. Worth a lot of effort, hard work each year. We'd like to have Connie and Tracy, they can keep it there. Give them that. Maybe we'd like to be there and want to know. This is very easy, not so long, but that's important for people to record it.
There you go.
Hard work and effort to make this work. We really do appreciate. Working everybody, apparently nine o'clock, let's see, we're about right. Hopefully you'll take a minute to thank them for all that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay, we got one other recognition we'd like to give everyone aware of tonight. And that is we've got someone that has worked here in the city for thirty long years.
Oh, for Pete's sake.
Off her word, because he has been outstanding. If you stop and think about that, thirty years.
It's a lot of meetings, right?
She comes every week, for every meeting, smile on her face, she was one of the first ones to the door tonight, and a big smile on her face. She always gives back, she feeds everyone. Well, I can't say enough. For thirty years that she's done this job. Michelle, how many? Well, I don't ask how many, who was the first, who was the mayor?
Bill.
She came for thirty years, she's not that old.
She was a baby.
I was in, I was in my twenties when I started here.
Lisa's presentation for her, and we'd like to remember a few minutes.
So, I had to be a little tricky, hopefully she didn't know that we were going to present her tonight because I gave her a false packet that didn't have the information in it. Just in case. But we really appreciate her, she is just so important to, to us, all she does, and so we got her a little gift.
Thank you so much.
You can open it if you want and show everybody. And we, we're just so grateful, thank you.
This is like the family Christmas party, you know, when somebody draws your name and you're opening the gift, you're like.
You notice it says, just act like you love it.
Yep, that's true. Fluent in what?
Mumbles and scribbles.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You can't ever leave.
It's so funny.
Okay, next item in our schedule, we need to approve the July ninth minutes, the July twenty-third minutes, and the July checks. Any extended comments? Hope to approve conservative, there.
Certainly.
And there's a motion in the second one, figure say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five, tax year twenty-two, certified property tax rate of zero zero one four four one. Attention on this, council. Motion to approve this.
I'll make moves into approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five, tax year twenty-two, certified property tax rate of double zero one four four one.
On second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, we'll be able to call it, cancel it, or.
Aye.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion quarter one. Next, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-six, adopted for year twenty-two, final question. We've worked hard and long, I think it's good to do at this point. Private discussion on this.
Public comment, there's a few items that you can be quick to give in the text of the budget. A change in term. Yeah, when the, when the council adopts the budget, they're adopting the numbers, all of the rest of the budget documents, the supplementary information and whatnot, we can adjust that and make those changes. Typically, a city has ninety days to get all of that additional information prepared. We've tried to include that upfront, but those, those were missed in editing, so yes, we'll update those before we submit that. Well, private discussion there, I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty-six, now, this is your final.
Motion in a second will begin with a roll call. Cancel the vendor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. Next item. Motion to open public hearing on South Weaver, David Ray, project agreement, third.
Mayor, let's open the public hearing on South Weaver, agreement, third minute.
Figure say aye.
Aye. Eastern student.
Eastern?
Yes, I made it easy this time. It's the Holstern, South Weaver City. The, on public hearing on South Weaver, I thought, well, agreement. Development agreement is presented as the first part of it, as is shown in the excerpt. But further on, in that development agreement, it states re-sony modification. The city agrees to take steps that require to immediately approve re-sony modifications and sufficient to permit the use of the property in accordance with the concept plan set forth in Exhibit C attached therein. Where is Exhibit C? It is not in the package. It is a very important exhibit, since this project has gone under, gone numerous changes in its design and layout throughout the years. It would be extremely beneficial for South Weaver residents to know exactly what the city council is possibly agreeing to permit the developer to do at this time. Also, a particular concern is the basing of the commercial versus the residential development that has greatly changed over time. This development project has greatly eroded the overall concept in South Weaver City general plan that was adopted on the eleventh of November in nineteen, I mean, twenty-four. It showed these parcels as being for commercial development along South Weaver Drive. The area proposals for commercial development has now dropped by about eighty percent from ten acres to only about two point two acres for commercial. Please explain what has happened, especially where is Exhibit C?
Is there comments? For motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven, South Weaver, city, we have a draft agreement, third amendment.
Yeah, I think it'd be great. Most definitely, so I might be able to pick them up. Well, first of all, I just would like to put in the, the same line Exhibit C's, same one we've discussed with the last couple hearings. And that, I can't show it to you now, but this is the same one we've been using, that was provided by the Tyco homes, with their changes, does reflect the twenty-five foot five foot lines. And these changes, for the development agreement, we've been working with the property owner, trying to get the right balance of protecting the city's commercial uses long-term, and make sure those happen also with viable commercial and residential product. So, that's what the attempt is through here today with the third amendment. We had a work session last month with some council members, development committee, to discuss different issues, and those items have been changed and reflected in the proposal. Again, you have a little spreadsheet, I just tried to go through, based on conversation with that, kind of the evolution of my experience through one. I believe everything I have summarized in here is correct, but it's, it's possible or not, everything is out of check. But it's mainly for discussion purposes. And go through them all, I'll just, the highlights, we can look at each one if you want, discuss it in more detail, but the highlights basically come down to, with the third amendment, the phase one will be thirty-one, about thirty townhomes. Then, in order to get the certificates of occupancy for those thirty townhomes, the building permit will base one commercial and for the app, the property owner applicant's recommendation, vertical construction will begin on phase one, retail commercial building. Then they can get their certificates of occupancy for phase one. They can then go on to phase two, for thirty-one townhomes. They couldn't get certificates of occupancy on phase two until building permits hold for that commercial phase two and vertical construction.
So, one clarification.
Well, let me just, you jump in there a second. Anyway, so, I think those are the big elements, there was discussed in the garage, the, there. The development review meeting was twenty by twenty would be adequate. But that is also a, any clarification.
So, it's decreased, there's, that would be sixty-one units, it's decreased to fifty-seven. So. So that's, that's where it's, you can use thirty-one and then the remaining. I don't think that's a big deal, but I just want to make sure it would not propose sixty-one, it's still fifty-seven.
What is, sorry, what is your name?
It's Robbie Thompson.
For my collaboration, what might you say, maybe the developer here on page two or three of the packet, that could be the proven page. Item number four, last part of it states, a developer channel, the United States of America, construction channel, provided that a building permit or permit that's applicable, commercial buildings have provisioned and construction, such as commercial buildings estimates. It doesn't say vertical. We need to add that language, and if we do, I would like to understand, what's the definition of vertical? Is that a six-inch foundation, is that vertical or not? Deep vertical is walls in a row. So I would like to hear what vertical means for developers.
So that should be part of that third amendment?
Yeah, the third amendment, there was a couple back and forth, and, and I didn't get them quite right when I put it in, so that, it should say vertical.
So, can I have a definition of what vertical means?
That's subject to what the discussion is, so, I understand the city, you know, will stand up.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. As long as you can hear me.
As long as I can see you.
I'll stay out. So, the discussion was, well, the original development agreement that is currently in place just said building permit. And in that work session, there was concerns of, well, what if someone just pulled a building permit, it sits on it? So, we in good faith, try to figure out, well, what is some meeting in the middle, that's not the case. No one, I think it's important to understand, you know, we talk C O, we talk building permits, but anyone within real estate development understands that at that point of pulling the building permit, you're hundreds of thousands in, solving engineering, you're posting bonds, like there's substantial money, plus the land, you know, the value of the land. And so we said, okay, what if we try to figure out how to take it a step further, so you guys don't think, or there's this perception that someone's just gonna mothball it or not do anything. So, a vertical construction, bonds are posted, all your sewer, gas, all your utilities, roads are stubbed, and you were literally foundation, and you're going vertical with walls. That was our understanding, that's why we said vertical construction. At that point, you're millions of dollars in, and, uh, because of, you know, again, cost of the land, cost of your sewer, storm drain, wet and dry utilities, you've made a substantial commitment, you're not gonna then just sit there and back and say, hey, we're not gonna do anything. So that's the intent, I'm trying to bridge that, so you guys feel comfortable with, look, these guys are real, they're not gonna go anywhere. Uh, and they're trying to make sure they can do the commercial, just what you guys want, so that's the little bit.
So, I could repeat back what I understand, what you said, is the risk from cities we have would be very small in that we just get a foundation pad.
Yeah, I, I don't know in any scenario that would happen, honestly, I do, because again, at that point, you've invested millions of dollars. That's, you know.
So to clarify, when we were talking about it, it was vertical, it, it couldn't just be the foundations, and that's where you're, anything that starts going vertical is what we were saying, and then they can get the CFO, and we know what's going on. And that's kind of the way others are gonna do it, that's the way it's, it's kind of.
So, and there was discussion about, like, trying to tie CFO to CFO. It's really difficult, because the builder's gonna go in, he's gonna start, so you're gonna masquerade the whole site, you're gonna start doing the utilities all at the same time. And then the builder usually has a little bit of a jumpstart, because it's not as complex to do townhomes as commercial. But trying to have cells, the second they pull a building permit, they're gonna go dig a hole, and then you're trying to sub this. And so, as a, you know, as a home buyer, I come in and say, well, when am I closing? When am I gonna be able to move in? Well, not really sure, because it's tied to this other CFO and the commercial, which is really tough. That's why we push, I, I swear, it was like really hard to bind that up, from our standpoint, from a builder's standpoint. We have no problem, again, putting the money in, getting going, it's just trying to align those is pretty difficult. And then you're, if, if you don't get it, then these people are like, when are we closing? We gotta move out of our park, I mean, it just causes a chain reaction.
I understand that. Second page, the truth. Not begin. Talking to you, Joe, the page two.
That's, I believe that's, yeah, just repeat, page one. I think that's, I mean, I've got it here, if you guys, I, it might not purchase the very, make sure.
So that needs to just be modified then, Mike, if we, if we make a motion.
You got an addendum back that has.
Was it in there?
Yes, from Lisa.
Sorry. Oh, I got the addendum, I just didn't compare it to, so, yeah.
Jamie? How do you feel with the discussion, what we're talking about, and the language that was in the current addendum? Does that protect the city on a, you know, the intent of what we're looking to do?
Yeah, I do. You, it would serve you to put a definition of vertical construction into this, so there could be no question or debate about what that means. I've heard enough just right here to think that's ambiguous, a lot of defined what counts. I did a quick search for contract provisions, so to define that, I didn't think that you were really clean. What you may want to do is that the building permits to hold, and then at least, enlist three or four activities that would happen before vertical construction, you know? Maybe it's your foundations are in place, certain utilities have been brought in, I don't know what it's. The mayor may know better than I do, on the construction process, what are the things that you look to? At that point, but I think if you listed out three or four items that necessarily happen before you begin framing and taking things above ground, that might be better than just say vertical construction.
Well, there was also confusion on the phases. The original map that we have, and I sent that one off to you, shows that we had three phases, where the third phase was that last section of commercial, that we can be taken care of. Are we, from, from what I originally saw, and I haven't seen the, the, my, all of it, it does divide that out into the three, or does it divide it into two phases?
So we don't change any of that, just leave the development agreement as is. We don't, that's not a discussion, trying to change or modify.
So, so it still has the three phases, Exhibit C has the three phases on it, I think it, and again, I have to compare what you said now, it's Joel's sound, you know, earlier today, asking if that was the current basing plan.
It should be, we've never talked or discussed about changing that up, yeah, that's not.
Is that, is that something you can even refer and throw up there, just so we know it's part of the?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking random, we want to be done with this in the fore, but I don't want to say, yeah, that seems like it is, and we really don't know.
Because it is a big part of that.
No, we want to figure this out.
We want to figure this out, that's why, if it could be up here, that's right.
One of us will have to do it.
No, not that one, I'm talking about plans, and so one of them would be part of the package.
So then, I printed this off.
Because even in the addendum, it's the, the third amendment that. C, one, three?
It's not that. The word C is, it's the final.
Yes, this will be done.
Okay.
But it's, so.
Yeah, so I would define vertical as above-ground construction.
What's included in that? Putting foundation, that is all. Yeah.
Puttings would not be.
Well, I think that's a little bit, but.
And, and foundation really could be that grade.
Yeah.
So, anything.
You're starting with what, you're starting.
You're starting to throw the walls there.
We're okay with that. I, I think I would qualify that to say above-grade.
That's great.
That's, that's my.
So what do you want to?
We have mentioned.
We haven't mentioned the street, snow, that would say.
Uh, yeah, so if you look at the, the concept, the design. Your access, your main access to get into the, this, this has to be done, this has to be done. So you can't, like, from a phasing standpoint, that is definitely.
It has to be part of the.
It has to be. There's no other way to access it.
While we're working on that, does everyone agree with the twenty twenty?
I think it's the only thing that we could do after going through every version of everything. I, I, I love it, but we got twenty five foot driveway.
Yep. I think it's, it's bringing this off of the old. And they're reducing to sixty one.
We're also. In discussion with Nate, making it so there's no, the biggest problem is when you have a land, like you step out, you have two steps and then there's a land. We pull in, that impacts, so we're making so there's almost no steps. So that's flat, so that you will pull the car all the way up, so that helps, yeah, that helps.
So I may, some red line edits just here in front of me, if you'd like me to read them out, so just so you can see if you're comfortable. So I, I started the word vertical, I understand that's in the version that. The late, latest version. And then I added a sentence at the end of that section two C that says. For purposes of this section, quote, vertical construction shall mean construction of portions of the structure. That are above grade, E G, frame.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Are we done?
No.
We want to do the three. The one.
So it's part of the.
Yep.
So.
Takes a minute.
Remove the commercial size requirement. What was the discussion on that? I don't, I wasn't at the work session in June, and it's maybe seven or eight, I wasn't aware of it, so.
So clear back. Well, cool. There was a, a building size requirement, now it's basically the, the ground. But in the phasing plan. It's the area that, I mean, they come in with the buildings that go on that ground, is that the way I understand it now?
Well, there's still, you know, we're not modifying. The. This would be amended, going back to. This was done October twenty three. So we're not amending the, you know, phase one. Shall include no less than twenty four hundred square feet. That's still in there. Um. Construction can grow no more than thirty, so it still has that threshold down in townhouse. And then you still have the phase three shall include no less than seven five hundred and four, a total of ten, so we're not changing that at all, just leaving it.
Okay.
That answer.
So it's there, phase.
Yeah.
Oh, it's right. So to answer your question, though, that is, it is different, it's now on phase one and phase two.
Okay, so we've taken off the third one, phase one is just the first.
The one?
So the commercial.
How much of that commercial?
Where's your phase line? Is this the baseline? Right here?
Yes.
So now it's everything that was in phase. So you're, now it's that half and that half.
Okay.
Which is more what we wanted up front.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the fighter.
What about the? That that's the management.
The retention base. It will have to.
Brandon will go. Not.
Yeah.
And then this three is.
Yes.
Yeah. That shows.
So that's, you got that's your one now. That's your, that's my.
It's the one version? This is why I don't wanna approve this, though, because I don't know what, like, I don't have it in front of me, I don't have it saying, this is. Exhibit A, B, C, one, two, three, and they're like. Shut out, so it's really difficult for me to say yes. It sounds like we have everything, but if something gets, you know, missed.
Right.
I will feel like I have not done my due diligence as a customer.
Would you prefer having all of the materials compiled in their final version, final state, that can then come before you for approval?
Well, that's, that's, yeah, that's how I would.
Right, well, and it's. It probably needs to depict fifty seven townhomes instead of sixty one. I, I actually thought that's what we were gonna see on the final.
Is there sixty one on that?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Unless this is not the final version.
Do you have something different?
That, no, that is still shows the sixty one.
That shows the sixty one there. We've been working with reeds engineering to show fifty seven, I didn't know if it, this is, I would assume that would have got it, but, but I don't know. I can show you what it is, that's.
I'd rather have it in, yeah, I mean, unless there's. If, if you know that we're all basically in agreement to, to the direction that we're going. Um, within the next city council meeting, we could actually bring a fully finished, uh, addendum with it now.
Does the bargaining at our public area?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna continue the item until the next city council meeting. And we can make sure we've got all the final versions put together, and put that in the package, it's just shells up. For the binding contract with the city, I think that's very important.
We can update the language that was discussed tonight.
What do you?
You rotated the camera.
We didn't do it to the webcam, there isn't the option. Oh, you unplugged it. Oh, okay. Hold on, please. We had to insert that. Now you have to select it, okay. Yep. That doesn't happen though.
We wanna. Are you saying you have it different?
Yeah, it's slightly more of the. That, that, what we're showing there is fifty seven, we have a date of March seven.
There it is, right here, did you see that? Yep. He just needs a minute.
Yeah.
That was fun.
I think the retention base probably should be shown on a page.
Let's not do that again.
Throw a line on there, show it.
That side, let's do that side. Still on there, like that? Hey, which one, which one, stop.
All right, so mayor, I'm going to continue resolution twenty four, so we were, uh, gave. So we can include the language. As well as. Updated.
That's fixed.
Hey, we have a motion and a second will be the roll call vote.
Hi.
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 One, that's there, but we'll. It will come back, or bye. We appreciate you.
Yeah. Yeah, no worries. Um. We'll just be on the next. Anything else out of me, or?
Next time. Probably sharing to pull our playground equipment as surplus. The air open. Uh, over. All right.
That's not on his second thing.
Move to both public areas.
Second.
Resolution twenty four dash twenty eight, declaring playground equipment as surplus.
Mayor, I make a resu, make a motion to, for resolution twenty four dash twenty eight, declaring playground equipment as surplus.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, starting.
Hi.
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 Before we go on, from that, um, lots of discussion that we deserve to go. Along with necessarily the surplus. Um, the question has arisen of, do we want to, uh, try to salvage and then? Resell the, uh, equipment? Uh, or do we want to just take the equipment down? Looking at it, I spent, uh, yesterday with Shay order and, um. The poles that are the foundation for it that hold it all up, uh, completely broken apart. Uh, there's no way to sell that, matter of fact, trying to take down will break those. Finally, all the truth. Um, but the. The rest of the equipment, the slides, those kind of things could probably be taken out. I don't know if they're a buyer, I don't know if there's anything that would even really salvage after we're all done. After looking at it, I do just recommend that, uh, unless we can find somebody specifically who wants the. Like, that we just look at the man hours and kind of think, it's simple, just. Follow it. If it's done, it's okay, it's possible. I do with that.
Okay.
Nothing. A whole lot of it's here, I love it. And it's like that purchase. Old park. Thirty four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and seventy six cents.
My only question was specification, um, from Park Committee about the grant credit, please give us a more information on that.
Sure. Do you want to just speak up?
Save like fifteen grand, yay. Why do you have to be so?
So did we get fifteen grand towards this purchase price?
They came off of the state, like the state contract.
Okay, that's what I thought. Those are originally fifty thousand. That's a little smaller, so we'll start at one hundred. Here's, here's.
Any other questions for Shay?
Motion that. Checking costs on liability insurance.
Yeah, you're right.
You guys want me to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion declaring, uh, park ground equipment as surplus.
No.
Oh, okay, uh, nice to do that. I move to approve the playground equipment purchase for Cedar Cove Park for thirty four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and seventy six cents.
Second. Right, we have the motion and a second will be a roll call vote, starting.
Hi.
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 Bye.
What was that total again, thirty four, nine?
Thirty four, nine, ten, seventy six.
Okay.
How soon do we agree?
So once we submit the order, which I'll do tomorrow morning, it's about six weeks out, and then it's about a week for it to stop, so. Yay.
Well, that was kind of like, okay, what do we wanna do this night, so we can, we, we're ready, so.
Yeah.
Get a background out there.
Okay, I just wanna thank you guys publicly, exclusively personally, but I really appreciate all the information you gave us on this. I don't have that out of my pocket, thank you.
Yeah, and Lisa was definitely helpful, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Dave.
If it's next time, we need to ratify. Uh, real estate purchase contract for South River. LLC, General R D, and.
Dave, you, you want to tell background with everybody else, background on this? Just changing the date, is we okay with that?
All right.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, make a motion, Dave.
I move to ratify the real estate purchase contract for South River, I see.
Second.
Hey, motion in a second, we will call the.
All right.
Hi.
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 Hey. Resolution forty four, twenty nine.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution twenty four, twenty nine, and pump day. Larson has worked tonight.
How possible?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
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 So.
No brain.
So do you have a timeline or?
Dave, what's your hat?
Question.
My question is, do we have a timeline or deadline to have? Long term?
So Derek and I have met and talked about often, we presented some of those for the public safety committee, and we want to put. Just more details to that before we bring that back to the council. If not, I don't have a timeline for you necessarily, just as soon as we can get some numbers to it and. Present those options back to the committee for a true recommendation of the, of the list of options, so hopefully within the next few months.
Thank you.
If possible, um, I, I would like to see a rush on that because this has been something that we've kind of set aside for like a while. Um, and.
Okay. Business, have you made any new business?
Not for me, no.
And that's something that came up, uh, regarding the street career. So. Swift, yeah. So, um, a couple of my neighbors complained that the streets were human, came around and did the streets on trash day, so. This is all the, all these movements around, around chance. So I don't know, if we, if we have control, we're letting them actually come, is that a scheduling issue?
Yeah.
I can follow up with public works on how that process happens. That's a very ineffective way to do streets.
Right, that's what we're, so obviously there's cars out there too, but you could literally rather keep that and see if it wasn't. Like if it announced, if the trash, you know, correct.
I'll follow up on that, if it is sending to the council, I'll tell you how, how that happened. I'll pull up on that. It is sending you all to the council on today, how that happens, what we can do.
The other question I had was going back to the, I saw that Cherry Farms was on there. Is there, I didn't notice if there was like repetition, like Cherry Farms needs to replace next year, or is there a timeline? That you're gonna have to save up for Cherry Farms, that said you gotta go through a change too? Is that, you want to do that?
Yeah. Jason Morrison with the trust had mentioned that Cedar Cove needed to go, like sooner than later. Cherry Farms was an oldie but a goodie, and we have a few years. Like he was like maybe one. Okay, we'll start with her.
It may also verify certain risks associated with that, that that seems to be.
Um, Cherry Farms wasn't as bad as Cedar Cove ours, but there is on that assessment, and it's, I think it's in the packet, all of the, the risks.
So, Dave, what I want to see in the next, whether it's, if it's possible, it's something that breaks down, so we can replant her. It sounded like that would be a more expensive replacement cost, right? Is it possible to start trying to put money away the next two?
Absolutely, yes. And the plan actually, when we, if you recall our budget retreat, we talked about replacing both of these during this budget. Both Cedar Cove and Cherry Farm, but it was a question of will we have enough of the wrap tax come in before the end of the budget here? So if we get to next spring and wrap taxes into the, uh, a rate that's good enough for us, then we would be able to perhaps do it next spring. If not, then we could potentially do it either in the fall or the following spring. So yes, it's already been identified as the next project.
We're working with Dave, we're showing responses, and you're sure the responses, there's no financial risk. They're not on your board.
I have one. For the symbol, can we please? Please, please. Get a sound ordinance signed for eighty-nine. If we worked really hard, we might have got the sound noise ordinance. Can we please just put that, whether people obey it or not? I feel so much better if it's posted.
Are you talking specific, the air brake issue?
Well, yeah.
The word angel brakes. I put a ride at the top of eighty-nine coming down the hill. Something to. One. Lincoln's got one.
They do. Lincoln has one right now.
Right as well, the same location.
Yeah, I've seen it.
We have plenty of.
A caveat, just to set expectations. When, when that ordinance was passed, it was possible to understand that the city's limited in its ability to go on to eighty-nine and worse.
A hundred percent.
But you can post it.
The sign will be there. They don't know that I can't go up.
Run down, Lance, run down.
I'll just feel so much better. We worked really hard, and we've covered this in the past for years about that, so.
I, I don't know if this is new business or not. But have any of you left the, the State Center Building and turned onto twenty-two fifty and then tried to turn left on eighty-one hundred south? Right there where Joe Gertz lives? There's a home right there that has several trees and bushes growing in the park strip. And, and it's getting bigger and bigger, and I noticed you have to eke out further and further to turn left right there. And eighty-one hundred is a pretty much, almost used as a straight street, so I don't know if there's anyone that can investigate that.
That's a, well, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a code report.
It's. Every time I use it, I think, oh, I wonder if anybody has said anything about this. Um, it, it's getting worse.
What's the intersection?
Eighty-one hundred and twenty-two fifty east. Right, right, the house right across the street from Joe Gertz.
That is, that is the North Ridge High School bus stop.
Yeah. It's a heavily used street, eighty-one hundred south, it's, so.
Kind of tattooed in this one bit. But we've both been working on the, uh, making of a service. Uh, it's aware of the nature of the city has made available this to. Website. Volunteer, get a fat, we. Out there, make them give them signs, things, projects that are available.
What day is that? When? What day? What day again? September eleventh?
The National Day of Services, nine eleven. While others did, we did on nine seven, some did on nine fourteen. Head talk. They have a list. Joe put together a very good list, some details. Doesn't, so.
Yeah. Listen, are you, are you? Sorry, quarter. Davey? Uh. Jerry? I'll go with it. Uh, I'm good. No. Um. Just letting everyone know so that you can give me feedback on it. Um, I am writing some code changes right now for, um, commercial areas, not taking care of their sidewalks and their front areas. And while I've been doing that, I found a number of cities are looking specifically at, um, like the core of twenty-one hundred and South Weaver Drive here, uh, you've got a large vacant field that, uh, just a, uh, cigarette would literally light up the entire, uh, hillside going all the way back to the freeway. Because of all that traffic, so, uh, they do need to take care of that. They do need to have, uh, some type of involvement. Property gets too high, especially during, uh, fireworks and all of this, so, uh, they work on that. If you have any suggestions, you're having, if you want to do it, just remember to say you have to abide by whatever you do.
If you have an imminent fire risk, you have needs. Uh, your nuisance code will cover that in your current civil enforcement. So that may be enough, if you really do think it's a tinderbox that's required right now. Go after it right.
Well, I think the plan that we, we have set in code right now is for the notifications service. So maybe that's something that we have to do. Few places to show that. Especially where we're right along the hillside there, so.
Um, I have nothing to, or Jeremy didn't report on our events.
I was there.
Mayor?
We'll have Shay.
Okay. I apologize. I was on the.
Nothing new on that public work facility still moving forward. They're, we're struggling, rocking on power. That is our longest revaluable by far, if we're not good where. We, we have a discussion of going different routes and everybody trying their own.
We're terrible. We can't do that. This is small. But we've been waiting for weeks. They're supposed to get the other, the, the power.
We are, we are phasing to start with where, uh, come over to report this back. We are phasing that they're gonna start putting foundations as soon as they have the structural review done. And not wait for the rest of the building to be done. So it'll be phased so that they can try to get the concrete, put the foundations done for weather.
Sorry, Sarah.
But that's our fear. We, uh, it's, it's happening everywhere. Thought of a change after supply chain stuff. We're going to live with this. Your house.
Yeah. Uh, so we have our last concert in the park this Thursday. We have.
Yeah, I'll see this.
Yes. No, I'm good. I'm good. I'm behind the camera. Uh, our last concert in the park is this Thursday. Uh, it's a returning band. Last year they performed in May and it got weighed out. So we're really excited to have them back. It's Bill and Diane. Um, we have one food truck coming, so we really hope we have good attendance on this one. It's our very last one for the summer, so come celebrate that. Um, another upcoming event that we have is our mother and son picnic in the park. And that's happening September fourteenth, uh, starting at six P M. I think we're gonna go till eight P M. Um, all you gotta do is bring your own blanket and picnic. We'll provide the entertainment, we'll provide all of that, but it's ten dollars per mom. Um, son's getting free, but if you're paying at the door, it will be cash only and it will be raised to fifteen dollars just to kind of encourage you guys to register early. So just be prepared for that, and then just keep in mind that the Halloween bash is coming in October as well. If you guys have anybody in mind, businesses or anything that you think I need to get in touch with, to see if you'd be interested in doing the trunk, email me, text me, let me know and I'll, I'll contact them, so.
Um, I do have one more. It's not really a committee or a new, uh, business, but. So, uh, I don't know if everyone has noticed, but we've gotten a couple complaints now about the number of mosquitoes, size and the effect that they're having on everyone. Like, there are areas that are very overrun, if you will. Working with the mosquito abatement, a couple of things that they wanted us all to know is that, number one, we do have the highest numbers in the state for West Nile virus. West Nile virus is very dangerous and especially for kids. Cause problems, but it's very rare, uh, that it does happen. But we have sound multiple pools. They only come out in the evening, so if you're there during the day, it's not west Nile. But once the sun goes down, uh, the skeeters that come out then are mean and they trigger areas. So we recommend everybody, of course, are using off. We are going to have it come and spray through the city again. Uh, special areas are, uh, kind of a little bit more attention given to them where we've got some moisture. This is a reminder for everyone in the city, if you've got water and it's in a tire, it's a bucket, it's in a barrel, whatever it is, dump it. That's the greedy pool, so. Yes, I can, but I don't want to worry.
It's hard to.
Okay, next, we'll, uh, look for a motion and we'll need to call attention.
Salute.
Second. I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.